Fire it up, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff. Thanks, everybody, for being here. We're going to start with a prayer from Commissioner Gillum.
Well, we thank you for this day. Thank you all for your many blessings following us. Thank you for each one that serves this county does their best to do what they believe is right for this community. But you bless each one. Your will be great for all the causes made that you answer as one accord of your goodwill. We pray for the folks across this community who have needs and may not know nothing about. We pray for the power of your spirit to be able to be each one. And thank you most of all for dying on cross for sins, be with us tonight. Thank you, Jesus' name. Amen.
Can we move on with the plates of the flag of the New Hero?
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we made these seated. We call the meeting to order with the first order of business being the roll call. So check in on your eye tabs, please.
Hey, I don't have my eye pad.
We'll get you one. Everybody sign in, please. I think it's operator here. We'll get John to fix it for you. You've got too much junk on you. Put present. Okay, I guess we got them all.
All right, we have fourteen Commissioners present and County Mayor.
All right, thank you so much. Next would be the complex of interest statement with, I want to call you County Attorney. Demoted again. From our County Attorney.
Commissioners Roach and Commissioner Britton wish to acknowledge they may have actual potential conflicts or interests on matters that may become before the commissions' night and they agree to act accordingly. Commissioner Britton?
I do.
Commissioner Roach?
I do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, combinations or recognitions. Anybody have anything to report there? Okay. As far as office reports and committee reports, we're going to read these into the minutes. Hawkins County Circuit Sessions and Juvenile Courts Annual Financial Reports for the year ended March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four have been distributed. And Hawkins County Trustees Office Financial Summary Report, January one, twenty twenty-four to March thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. You just need to read that in a minute. You've got a copy of that in front of you. I'd like to recognize real quick, John Holman. Come on up. I know I'm butchering your last name, John.
No, no, you got it right.
Okay. You're welcome to step up to the mic and speak and speak.
Okay. My name is John Holman, and the reason I'm here is I'm representing the peer net. This is a local chapter of Sierra Club. And we are having a celebration. Did you all know today was Earth Day?
Yes.
Yeah, lovely day, wasn't it? So anyway, we are celebrating Earth Day on Saturday. And we will be celebrating Earth Day at Rocket Park and from nine to five. And we would hope we would just love to see you all there. If you have the time to show up, we would love it. There would be music, flying jays. There'll be food, snacks. People will be doing home baked cookies, things like that. There'll be games for children. So I'm thinking we just have a fun time. And if you manage it, come on down and see us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Yeah, it's going around. We said...
We have some information there on it.
Do you want the rest of these back?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I was just hoping I had enough for her.
Okay. No, you're good. You're good. And if anybody forgets about it, it's on them because you passed one out, Nancy's passed one out, and we've had one in an envelope passed out. So we've got three invitations to the event. So if anybody forgets, it's on them.
Okay. And I guess the last thing I'd like to do is thank you all for your service.
Thank you, John. Any questions for Mr. Holman? All right, moving on down to the approval of minutes. I have a motion. Soon as we get going. All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Barker, Second Commissioner Britton to approve last month's minutes. Are there any questions or comments? All right, you ready to go ahead and vote? Let's go ahead and vote.
Fourteen, yes.
All right, the minutes from the last meeting are approved. Time to move down to public comments. Mr. Holman was on this list. We've taken care of him already. Jessica will wait on you because it's really not on the agenda, but the budget sort of is. So Dane Chisholm.
Good evening. I have a whole bunch of stuff written down, but I'm actually going to uncover one little portion that I had here. I have the budget consideration comment, essentially.
Yeah, that's fine.
I know the budget is kind of at the forefront of focus right now. A lot of people are talking about it. A lot of decisions being made. We got a lot of feedback recently from a lot of citizens that don't feel like they've had an adequate opportunity to express their concerns about the budget or ask questions in the choir in general about the budget simply because the format of the commission meeting or the budget meeting isn't necessarily appropriate or designed to facilitate those kind of conversations. If you're given like three minutes to be able to speak, which I understand by obviously our status is basically a business transaction, there's a lot of things to do. So there has to be a timeline for people to be able to speak and everything. But three minutes really just isn't enough for individuals to go past surface level information that they are seeking. A lot of people don't feel like they've had enough time to elaborate their points or, you know, dig deeper into things that they're concerned about. So, and we've heard this for several weeks on end. A lot of people have asked potentially about a, you know, a commission town hall event essentially, or like a committee town hall event that is set up outside of a commission or a budget meeting in an official capacity necessarily, where individuals would be able to attend, commissioners and people involved with the budget, the public would be able to attend, there would be a moderator, people could just come up and ask outside of the three-minute timeline. I mean, there's a lot of people who have more intricate questions on things like the airport, you know, obviously you guys are well aware of the thing with the bridge. It's been a very hot topic. A lot of people are confused and have questions about things like that. So I'm just saying respectfully, I feel like it would be really cool if you guys would consider participating in a town hall event along the lines of two-hour thing. It's not a trial. It's not, people aren't going to be there in any kind of disrespectful format. Just simply giving them an opportunity to dig past the surface level. I don't want to beat a dead horse. That's pretty much my main point there. I think that could be done pretty easily. I actually don't think it would be that complicated. There's a lot of really awesome buildings in Hawkins County. Like if you run it out with adequate space, you know, have a decent moderator who just will let people come up, ask questions, pause them, let the commissioners give an actual response. It doesn't need to be combative or any, in no way is it intended to be some kind of thing where everybody can come, you know, really, you know, talk some BS. There's just a lot of people that are really like, I would yell up and I would ask, I've read that a thousand times. I would yell up and I would ask about this, but I know it only got so long and there's something that's been going on, a short meeting, et cetera, et cetera. So that was really one of my points, but for right now, that's probably the only one.
Okay. Thank you, Dane. You know, we don't, we don't set a time limit at the, at the budget hearings at all. And everybody was invited to come to that. We've got another meeting tomorrow starting at eight-thirty. You know, all of those are publicly noticed.
I certainly understand that. I guess where I was coming at is I don't know if it would be appropriate to have fifty different people there with long format questions and concerns because of the way it's designed and...
Well, I'll tell you what we'll do. We'll discuss that tomorrow's budget committee meeting and see if they want to pull something like that off. I think it's a decent idea, but we got, we got to think about it and see where and when and, you know, times that can get shorter. So we'll see for something.
Eight-thirty in the morning. Yes, for coffee time.
All right, Christina Smith.
Hi, I'm Christina Smith. Thanks for letting me speak. Dane already hit on a lot of what I wanted to say. We have folks that come to our meetings. We are with United Citizens of Hawkins County. I know you've heard from us before. We do have a lot of interest in a town hall. I wanted to offer being in contact to the commission for United Citizens of Hawkins County, phone number, email, wherever you like. I can definitely take the lead on setting up a location, a time. I can do all that. I have a lot of skills in that department. But yeah, really just bottom line is, the community wants to be able to have more of that open door line of communication with their elected representatives here in the county. And we do hear a lot from folks that say, well, you know, those commission meetings are right over your time for me, or such and such. So there's, there's different reasons why you don't have as many people here asking questions. And we feel that a town hall would be in a more relaxed environment instead of here, where we would have a greater turnout and people would actually be more comfortable asking questions without a time pack of three minutes and being able to get feedback from each of you without a time pack trying to brush through your, your meeting here as well. So, yeah, we were just kind of curious how you'd all feel about that. You did indicate you had a meeting tomorrow at eight-thirty. So we will definitely try to have one of our folks there to address that again at the specific budget meeting. But I would like to say with this town hall, if people are able to ask other questions that are not just budget-related, but county-related, including the bridge, maybe things to do with the sheriff's department, there's a lot of topics that come up at our meetings where people are curious about how things are being done or how funds are being prioritized for different things. We do have some questions on resolutions that we're going to cover tonight, and it's more than one or two. So we didn't really sign up for every resolution and every question. We're just kind of like raise our hands if that's okay. But we're very interested in a town hall, and I will do above and beyond effort to make sure that that happens. So if we can get a yes from you guys, I will be the person to make sure that that happens.
Okay. That's good. Thank you.
So Commissioner Smith, and I would love to kind of talk to one of your moderators. I've actually met myself available to you guys a couple times. I've never gotten invited to one of your meetings, but I would love to come. And I've reached out to Mr. Dane. I think I gave him my number. So still, still open. I still look out for you. So you know, whether you can call or invite me to a meeting, I'll not be back.
Okay, everybody has brought up questions about the bridge, et cetera, what's going on with it. Latest information came this morning when Eric and I had a conversation with Scott Gibson. He's with Cumberland Securities. He's the one that would issue a bond if we needed to issue bonds, et cetera. I just wanted to clear up a couple of things before I let Jessica come up. A lot of people ask me, you know, we've got a wheel tax, a high wheel tax. Why can't we use the wheel tax to pay for the bridge? Well, the wheel tax technically is misnamed. It should be called a privilege tax, otherwise known as a wheel tax. But it doesn't pertain to the roads. In fact, the original wheel tax was twenty dollars. And at that point, it was decided to break it up three ways: highway department, schools, and general debt service, which meant that of the original twenty dollars, highway department gets six dollars and sixty-seven cents out of that sixty-seven dollars. So they don't get the whole thing. It doesn't go toward the roads. It goes toward other things as well. After a while, we tacked on another forty dollars and then another seven dollars. And those funds, thirty dollars goes to the general fund, ten dollars to public safety, and seven dollars to the schools. So out of that additional forty-seven, the highway department's share didn't go up any. There were six dollars and sixty-seven cents. If you're thinking we've got enough highway money to build a bridge from the wheel tax, we don't. Remember that six sixty-seven is what they get. Now, I didn't get a chance to, to talk to Dane Jones today, but I've got some ideas and he's going to have to get on board with it. So what I'm saying is it's kind of a tentative thing now. We do have approximately one point two million dollars set aside for bridge repairs. That money comes from the state. But we're projecting we're going to need a minimum of twenty million dollars to replace that Goshen Valley Bridge. So the one point two is not going to cover it all. But we've been, I banged my head against the law for money with state, federal officials to see if there's money out there. Right now, there's not. In this fiscal year, there's no immediate funding available. We can apply for various grants for the next fiscal year, but we've got no assurance of receiving really anything. Now, the best shot we've got for a bunch of money is the Federal Bridge Improvement Plan money. Their cutoff was a couple months ago for this fiscal year. They'll open it up again next year. But I've talked with them about what the requirements are going to be on that. And we're going to have to have at least twenty percent of the total funding required readily available for the county's match for that. So in other words, around four million dollars to get that match. Could be higher because Bridge Improvement Program likes to roll a bunch of bridges in together. We've got six right now on the list that need to be fixed. So we may be able to do it all under Bridge Improvement Plan, but keep in mind the Baltimore Bridge is going to take up a lot of that fund. And they only usually award two of those per state per year. So it's going to be, it's going to be heavy competition. But if we can have money available and show them that we have made progress toward working on this bridge, it probably will give us a little bit of an insight on getting that money. So, and you have to keep in mind that even if we had twenty million dollars in our pocket today, we're looking at multiple years of permitting, design, engineering, preparation before construction even begins. So we've got multiple years there. I'd like to get the thing moving as quickly as possible. And my proposal would be to begin studies and engineering for the bridge immediately using a portion of that bridge fund that we've already got stashed away. So we can get that rolling. So it doesn't drag behind. We know we're going to have to replace the bridge. And we need, and we know in order to do that, we've got permitting studies, et cetera, all has to be done. So I'm going to try and work on getting that money. And Dane is going to have to agree to it. Like I said, I didn't get a chance to talk to him today. And then Scott Gibson with Cumberland Securities suggested that we have the commission pass a resolution that would allow for issuing bonds for the bridge fund should they be needed. So we can get that part rolling. And then that resolution could become part of our application package with the federal, with the Bridge Improvement Program. So they know that we've got money available should we need it. That put us in a position to act pretty quickly if we needed the money, become part of that federal grant application, like I said. The tough part is, and here you go, just throw things at me if you want. In order to pay for the bonds, we figured that we're going to have to have ten extra cents on our tax rate to pay for that bridge debt. I know that's not what anybody needs to, wants to hear, but there is no other source of income right now to, to get that together, to pay that bond if, if we should need it. I'd like to go ahead and put that hike into effect maybe. So if, if we did that, we know we're going to have to show money to match the federal money. If we did, we could start using some of the money to make sure the roads that will become detours around the, the bridge are in shape to handle the added traffic. So there's a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes. I mean, we're, we are working on it. And I told Jessica this morning, when I talked to her, we're working on it. But that's, that's the latest that, that I have on that. So Commissioner Gillum, you got a question?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say a couple of things. One, I want to say I appreciate you, Mayor, and the work that you've done on, on trying to work out this bridge issue. I know technically roads and highways aren't in, aren't in your job description. And so I know you've had to step out...
Everything's in my job description, John.
You've had, you've had to step outside of your area expertise to take care of that. And you've took, tried to take the lead on it. And so I appreciate that. And on the question about the town halls, budget hearings, that type thing, I'd be glad to participate, anything like that. And I'll tell you, county budget is, is much more complex than even I thought that it was when I, when I got into this. It's not nearly as, as simple as I'd like to, or to be, which only magnifies if people have interest in learning about it. It is going to take more than just attending a, a budget meeting or asking a three-minute question at, at our meetings, which we all understand that it's appropriate to have those time limits. But if you want to understand it, it's going to take time to learn it because it's quite complex with different funds and revenue sources and all of that. But I'd certainly be glad to help you.
Okay. Anybody else before I get Jessica here? Jessica, come on up. We won't bite you. She told me this morning she's going to be nervous. Just don't worry about it. You're among friends.
Thank you for touching on that. And all the hard work is all in the end. And explaining those were exactly where I did. Yes, her daughter-in-law is my neighbor. And I'm totally happy for that until I saw her sitting here. But mostly what I wanted to come up with, you don't need to see the records. You don't need to see the money. You don't know all that. But the impact is we're just going to pay for the people who live there. I grew up down here. For twenty-two years, I was in Rogers School. I had no M C B on that end of the county. So I invite you all to travel and then work touch on the alternate routes that will be needed. They're a little, they're a little shaky. And I'm afraid things will snow all if those end up being the main routes to get out later. Go over Mountain View Road and go on Village Club, where the two that I'm most concerned about. So I invite all of you to journey on that end of the county and, and look at those roads as you're making decisions about this. I know there's a lot on your ass plates. Just my story is my husband works at Eastman. He works four weeks a day, so he leaves at three to eleven. It's on three to eleven at night. He'll be up here doing this instead of me. My little boy, my little girl, my little girl's not with me tonight, but they go to Cedarview Christian School. Those of those are in Kingsport. So most of the things my family does now is in Kingsport. So we're going to have to go up and over that mountain road if the bridge closes. And all the local business that we do with Churchill, going to Phaeton, going to the pharmacy. That's that much longer. I mean, whereas I live in my hometown, I should know it right now. It's going to add, you know, thirty miles for me to get out of there just to go to the pharmacy unless I transfer everything else. So that's not only going to, I mean, either it's going to impact me or it's going to impact the pharmacy. So that's just kind of the personal part of what you all are having to deal with. So, but thank you all for digging. And if you have community assistance, as somebody who lives everywhere, please, I think that'll probably be, that you've been involved. So thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Appreciate you. Okay, that's all I've got on the signing sheet. So we ready to proceed? Oh, Rob, I'm sorry.
Mark, everyone, thank you. And about the bridge, we did have a, we had a public safety and road committee meeting this week, or the last week regarding the bridge. And Mark touched base on a lot of things. I think Jeff was there and he'll have further information about that and reports. But the bridge, I want to make it clear that we are not taking this lightly. We're taking it very serious and we're looking at all options. So just going to take some time and make sure we do our due diligence. So I want to thank the Commissioners who, Dane, Dane, I know certain members weren't there. They were not all in the committee, but we will, we'll get through it.
Thanks. Thank you, Commissioner Paul. Anybody else? All right, we're going to move on down to Resolutions. Twenty twenty-four oh four oh one, sponsored by Commissioner Gillum.
The Honorable Mark Lewitt, Chairman of the Members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, the Regular Session met this twenty-second day of April, twenty twenty-four. Resolution reference appointment, appointment of Equalization Board for Hawkins County for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five term, whereas the Equalization Board is appointed by a county legislative body on every, every even calendar year as per P C A six seven dash one dash four zero one. Whereas the board consists of five members that are tax chairs and are from different areas of the county, with the largest city in the county appointing one member. The term is two years. And whereas the following or the current committee could desire to be reappointed to the Equalization Board for a two-year term ending June, twenty twenty-five. That's William Bill Cordell, Jim Wells, Wayne E. Price, Jr., Paul Tommy Morrison, and Gloria Silvers. Therefore, be it resolved that people listed below be appointed as the Equalization Board for Hawkins County for the term of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Chairman, I so much.
We've got a motion from Commissioner Gillum, Second Commissioner Barker. Any discussions, questions? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jessica. We have a few questions on there. Who appoints and chooses the people on this board? How much do they pay? And what is their appeal denial rate?
I can't answer those questions. I'm sorry.
Is it because you don't know, or is it just...
I don't know. I don't know. These people are on the board and, and asked to be reappointed. This resolution came in from somewhere, I guess, from the session.
And anyone else answer this question?
I'm sorry.
And anyone else who has any knowledge of this information?
I would, I, go ahead.
I would point you to Property Assessor's Office. You know, the Equalization Board has to do with assessment of property. And, you know, he's familiar with the board and is actually the one who asked me to introduce this resolution, reappointing these, these board members. So that'd be Mr. Gillespie. So I would, I would direct you to his office to get answers to those questions about what they're paid and how you get a seat on the floor. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions before we move on? Mr. Trent.
Well, I'm concerned about Saguornsville doesn't have any representation. Two of the, two of the people on the board are from the top tax area down and there. They're fairly close to each other, the two from Churchill, fairly close to each other. I respect all these people, appreciate their service and all that, but I feel like it should be more equally distributed. And I feel like the area of Saguornsville shouldn't have any representation on this board. I have property there, lots of people, friends, family, and I just, I just don't like the fact that they don't have a representation. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? All right, here you go. Let's go ahead and vote. All right, hearing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Twelve yes, two no.
Okay, resolution passes. Let's go to two thousand twenty-four, oh four oh two, introduced by Commissioner Barker.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and Member of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, the regular session met this twenty-second day of April, two thousand twenty-four. Appointed Charles Johnson to the Hawkins County Industrial Board. Whereas, one seat on the Hawkins County Industrial Board has become vacant due to the resignation of Amy Skelton, due to her performance of juvenile judge whose term expires June thirty, two thousand twenty-six. Whereas, the March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four Hawkins County Industrial Board meeting, the board voted to recommend the following appointment to the Hawkins County Industrial Board. The motion was voted on and received majority votes in the Hawkins County Industrial Board to recommend Charles Johnson to the Hawkins County Commission for Approval. Appointed filling the term of Amy Skelton. Charles Johnson will turn in June thirty, two thousand twenty-six. Therefore, we have resolved that Charles Johnson be appointed to the Hawkins County Industrial Board and leave the term of Amy Skelton ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-six. Mr. Chairman, I so much-
We got a motion from Commissioner Barker, second, from Commissioner Gibson. We're having a little computer issue over here, but if anybody has questions or comments? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, can anyone speak to, I understand, thank you for the robustity in the resolution package, by the way. There was a lot to unpack here, and we really appreciate that. Can anyone speak to what qualifications that Charles Johnson had over the other applicants that caused him to be the choice for the ID?
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, he is the Director of the Tennessee School of Technology that's in Fifth Bend. His expertise is used already when they are recruiting businesses in. He can provide a meeting place, he can provide the curriculum that they have, he can provide any future curriculum needs. And he has a degree. So he is in the process of expanding the T-CAP to try to accommodate all the new jobs that are being created. And I just felt like that he was the right person to be on there. The other two candidates were probably, Mr. Metz was just as qualified as was Mr. Smith. And it was up to the board. It was a secret ballot. So no wonder to anybody voted for it. And Mr. Johnson received the most votes.
The board gets a list of qualifications of all that are nominated, and then they vote at their meeting. And then we confirm it at the industrial committee meeting of this body. And then it comes before the full board. Any other questions on that? Cindy, you ready to vote? Hearing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Fourteen yes.
All right, that resolution passes, and let's go to two thousand twenty-four, oh four oh three, also introduced by Commissioner Barker.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and Member of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, the regular session met this twenty-second day of April, two thousand twenty-four. Establishing an additional deputy clerk position in the Hawkins County Clerk's office. Whereas, on April first, July first, two thousand twenty-two, the state of Tennessee enacted Public Chapter Number One oh oh three, amending Tennessee Annotated Code five-five-six one oh four. And whereas, this law states for receiving and forwarding to the division each application for certificates of title, the county clerk receives a sum of eight dollars and fifty cents. Three dollars of the fee must be earmarked for the provisions of service directly related to titling and registration and must not revert to the county general fund at the end of the budget year if unexpended. And whereas, the Hawkins County Clerk has set a designated fund for the revenue, which has grown to an amount suitable for covering the expense of hiring an additional clerk, except for the expense of benefits to assist the current staff at both Rogersville and Churchill locations. Whereas, the Personnel Committee, at its meeting on March seventh, two thousand twenty-four, voted five to one to recommend adding this position and sending it on to the Budget Committee, seeing that the minutes are attached to this resolution. Therefore, be it resolved that a new position be established for the county clerk's office at pay grade seven, the salary which is to be funded from the reserve account of the county clerk's office with benefits being paid by the county. Mr. Chairman, I so much-
We've got a motion from Commissioner Barker, second. Commissioner Palmer, do we have any questions? All right, Commissioner Britton.
Oh, yeah, unless I'm misunderstanding, it's up to you to go on about the mentions, but you said that they discussed it and no further action is taken.
That is true, Commissioner Britton, they did discuss it, but they decided they didn't wanna vote on it. They said that there would need to be a resolution introduced by the Personnel Committee Chairman.
That it, Commissioner Britton? Commissioner Gillum?
It was voted on, it just passed once the budget made it up.
Yes.
So it has went before the budget.
Yeah, these minutes are from two meetings ago.
Just walk up ahead and-
Yeah, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Um, yes, so thanks again for the robust package. We did see that Commissioner Gillum voted no. Could you possibly speak to that?
Um, yeah, I can. I respect the county clerk and the work that they do. You know, and I haven't said a whole lot about this just because I, you know, it's not costing the county a lot of money. When we bought the building Churchill, we were told there wasn't going to be any need for any additional staff. And we're six months into it, and we already do. And so, I don't know, I just didn't feel like I wanted to support that. Yeah, that's my thought.
Okay, I have a follow-up question, and I'm glad you said that. So when a new position is created like that and funded, or partially funded, because I understand that either the salary or the benefits, the salary would be covered, but then the benefits are separate. Once that position is created, does it ever go away? Or is that, that's a position forever now?
That's not one that's covered by maintenance of effort. So, I mean, that would be up to that office, whether they wanted to continue that position or not. And I'll speak to what Commissioner Gillum said. As far as, we didn't think additional staffing would be required, but that Churchill office has grown exponentially, especially through the drive-through. And they just, they are working themselves to death. And this money is available through that fund, and we just decided that this may be the way to go ahead and add somebody. Mr. Clums?
Will this position be advertised? Take application?
Yes.
Per my personnel policies, it has to be posted. I've already received a few resumes, and that's gonna be my request, just to receive resumes, no in-person interviews until I review all the resumes. That's how I've always done.
Does it advertise in the paper?
No, it does not have to be advertised in the paper.
It can't be advertised in the paper right now, because we haven't officially voted it in.
I understand it.
They're just, people are realizing that it may be open, and they're getting resumes to her. As far as notice for this, we can't notice it until this passes tonight.
I attended, about three years ago, I attended a conference in Chippewa. And I understood at that time, from what they said, that most positions had to be advertised in the newspaper.
We will advertise it as soon as we pass it tonight.
Yes, sir.
So, yes, ma'am?
And have transactions increased? Or they just transferred from Rogersville to Churchill?
We do about forty-two percent of our business is in our Churchill office. Now with the additional drive-through that we have in that nice facility, we have a lot more people utilizing in-person. I have three staff members there right now. And as we, we have a three-hour time period that people go to lunch. So during the, like, eleven to two position, you've got two people there trying to run the front of the, front of the desk plus the drive-through. And that's when a lot of people come in to do their transactions, is during lunch.
Well, would it make sense to alternate schedules? Would it transfer someone from Rogersville to Churchill?
I don't have enough people to transfer. That's what I do when I have absences, man.
It certainly is not gonna increase, you know, the number of registrations in the county. But it becomes real convenient to do it through the drive-through even versus mailing it in. I mean, I mail mine in, and I'm just across the street. I mean, I could come over here and do it just as easily. But I think, personal opinion, people in Churchill are finding it much more convenient to even above mailing it in, to go through that drive-through.
But there's a cost to the tax payers with that drive-through. I mean, are we promoting online?
Are we what? I'm sorry.
Promoting online?
Yes, ma'am, the state of Tennessee has an online, has an online section that's at my website. In any county you live in, you can register online. And that's been that way for a long time.
And the county's promoting that and making sure that-
I can't say that we have-
It's on my website. It's at the HawkinsCountyClerk.com. It's on the website.
Okay, Parker.
It just seems to me that, from what I understand from the conversation at this point, we built this, we didn't build it, but we bought this facility up there. And it's generating more business, quote-unquote, more people using this than weren't using it before. What were they doing before? We're just making it easier for them to pay, but this county's got a lot of big expenses. And it seems to me, we need to be figuring out places to cut, not just adding things on. I think a lot of people would rather not have that facility up there and just mail their things in than have their taxes go up. But there's no, doesn't seem to be any thought about these trade-offs.
Okay, I'm gonna let-
Start thinking about-
I'm gonna let this lady just address that.
... and titling. We do marriage license, we do boat registrations, we do business license, we do the county commission business. So we do lots of things other than just renew a registration. Lots of things.
But if we cut down the people coming in and doing registrations in place, and if they do it just as well-
We have to kinda look back too. At one of the reasons for that building was, we were sharing a space with Churchill. And it was very inconvenient to get into that facility. We had handicapped-
Maybe that's a good thing.
Okay, somebody was on the board, and I wiped it out. Who was on? You go ahead.
All right, so I'm gonna address this, these comments about whether we need this or not. We have a lot of people in this county that, one, still prefer the traditional method of coming in by handkerets. We have a lot of people who are disabled in this county. We have a lot of people who-
Well, we're not able to make people who are disabled to go in.
Sir, can I speak, please? We gave you your time. There's a lot of people who do not wanna use the mail. A lot of people do not wanna use the online system. So, you know, if you don't choose to do that, then there needs to be another option. A lot of people still wanna come in and do business face-to-face. That building on that end of the county, the reason we bought that building, is because we were in a bad agreement with the city of Churchill. And it was one or the other. We either spent the same amount of money for their capital projects, and we don't get anything out of it, which we have to leave at any time. This building, and many commissioners, or the commissioners in that end of the county, have also said that their constituents have said this is a much better flow and have received credit in that building. That end of the county is a growing end of the county, and our population will continue to grow in Hawkins County. So, you know, when you have someone that's disabled, and they have the option to go through a drive-through instead of sitting out in the parking lot, and it's pouring down rain, they have to get out of their vehicle and walk through the rain. You know, they utilize the drive-through, just like down here in Rogers. So, you know, to make the statement that they don't have to do it, they can do online. Well, a lot of people don't understand how to do it online, so they get confused, they get frustrated. So we have to provide every option. And I'd be hard to say if we didn't provide an option, there'd be people fuss about that too. So you have to think about, other people have the same, other people have requests other than you. You know, it may not be what you want, but we have to think about everybody in the county in every position that people are in. So I've seen the numbers from just the drive-through here in Rogersville. In three days, you know, they'll see two to three hundred transactions. Thousands of dollars.
I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree with that at all. But I rather suspect that the people that are saying, well, I like this, and I like this, and I like this. Lots of people like a lot of things, but you tell them, you can have this, but it's gonna cost you more. I don't know that you, I don't know that people would go along with that. They're not listening, you're not telling them, nobody's telling them, oh, yeah, we can do this, we can do this, we can do this. But, I mean, your taxes are gonna go up. I think a lot of people might think that second.
No one had mentioned a word about taxes going up to fund this position.
Well-
Is it just funds shifting? Like, we have seen in some of your documentation where funds kinda shift from one category to another.
And that's everybody. We have to move funds around sometimes. But we're not going, no one had discussed a word about taxes going up to fund a position or the benefit to this position. You know, I understand some people may not feel like the need for this position, but we have to stay ahead of the game and anticipate growth in this county. And there may come a time when that position that needed the help out become Churchill, Rogersville, and the drive-through. So, you know, you don't go to a bank and say, well, that tailor's sitting there not doing anything. You need to get rid of her position. You know, there's times of day when, you know, everybody is busy. We've all seen it. You know, we see what happens when you get rid of a position like at Walmart. You have automated systems. Everybody wants to fuss about it. I don't have anybody to check out my produce. So we have to anticipate, and we have to, you know, expect further growth in this county. So we're trying to stay ahead of game.
Okay, so just for clarification, it's not an increase in taxes?
No one had made that comment. I'm not gonna say yes or no, because we're still going through the budget hearing process. But no one had made that comment, that we're gonna increase taxes to the benefit of the benefits of this position.
The salary's funded out of that reserve account.
Okay.
And just- It can be used for nothing else other than county clerk business. So, and one comment I wanna make is, if you go back right before we bought that building, we, what you're saying is, we should just close that building? Is that true, Mr. Parker?
No, no, I would say you shouldn't have bought it in the first place, but-
Okay, the old building. We should just close that and not offer them another alternative?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you imagine the uproar from up that way, them not having a place to go? That building we were in was a ticking time bomb, basically. We were gonna be on the hook for a new roof, new windows, ADA compliance, which was almost impossible in that building. And if we were to have one ADA claim there, if it was a big claim, it would have been more than we paid for this new building. So, I mean, we hashed it out. We have to serve that into the county too. And we didn't feel like they were being served correctly with that building. Somebody else had a hand up?
Oh, I just, this is my first question me, so. I just had a question. So for me, I'm just thinking about me and my husband. He goes and drives through a place, his water or whatever. But it's because there's fees, it's like three dollars, it's a fee if you pay online.
There is an online fee, yes.
So that might be another reason why more people are driving in.
Well, it's, you know, you'd have to poll everybody that came through there and say, why did you use the drive-through?
I know, that's why we do it, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Because he's not willing to pay the three fifty.
Commissioner Gillum?
Yeah, I was just going to say that as we anticipate growth and hopefully have more people doing all types of business inside our county, I think it would be good to take a cue from the private sector, which are increasingly finding ways to reduce the number of staff that they're using by utilizing electronic tools such as online and things like that. And I'm not gonna speak for the folks that have spoken after tonight, but I think it's a fair point that they made to say that, why would we not find a way to promote, say, hey, we're, you know, understaffed, or we wouldn't tell you we're understaffed, but if you're struggling with staffing, find ways that people can get the county business done without having to come in person. There may be a fair amount of people that do that. It's far beyond the discussion of what we're discussing tonight. I guess it's more of a philosophical thing to move forward. But I do think it's one worth having. But I do think it's one worth having. As the labor market continues to get tighter, as labor gets harder and harder to find and to afford, we're gonna have to do that. That's why, that's why, you know, restaurants and grocery stores are doing that now, because they can't, number one, find people, number two, they can't afford people. So, they're finding innovative ways to serve customers without requiring as much manpower. So, you know, I can't speak for you, but I feel like that's the point you were trying to kind of make. And I tend to agree with that, unfortunately, in the world of government. And this is no offense to the clerk or anybody else that I'm a part of the government. It just isn't as easy to move that quickly and make those quick decisions like it is in the private sector.
And you have to remember that the funds that are going into this account can only be used for that. Do we want that money to sit there and not be used? Or do we want the money to be used to help out it with the flow? Yes, ma'am?
So, I just was wondering, why do they charge three fifty? Because we would much rather pay online.
That's a, that's a statement.
The company that we use, and we can't do that by ourselves. We have to have software to do that. That is their charge, not mine. Just like when you use your debit card or credit card, just like when you use it at Walmart, you don't see that extra fee that you're paying. That's added into the cost. In government, you can't do that.
But you could absorb that cost.
No, I cannot.
Or you can change, you put a wheel tax on, so you're gonna do that. I mean, you can't, you can't...
Any other comments, Ms. Davis?
I was just gonna say, to chime in on what Mr. Gill said, you can't register a vehicle online, you can't register a boat online, you have to do those in person. You can't get a marriage license online, you have to do those in person. So, until the state changes the laws, that's the way that has to be done.
But there are a lot of things you can do.
All right, Commissioner Gill?
I'll just say this to you, Nancy. So, I'm not beating up on her, any of my comments. She's doing this in the most, if you're gonna add a person, clerk is doing it in the most physically responsible manner possible. I'll say that by using the funds that are reserved to her office, that's the state statute that's allowing her to do that. So, I appreciate her finding money in her own budget and not coming to the general fund asking for money. So, for that, I very much appreciate it. It's not something I blame the sport still yet, but I do appreciate you doing it in the most physically responsible way you can.
All right. Can we wrap up the questions real quick? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you for that, Ms. Davis. Since it's coming from your own fund, is it not possible to, I understand that the benefits are not covered, but the position and salary is, is it possible to hold off, like, a period of time, like, say, six months, to keep getting funds into that particular fund to cover all of it?
There's no way for me to anticipate what the person that I choose to hire's benefits are gonna cost. Health insurance is something that can vary a lot. So, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying I can cover all that out of my reserve account when, you know, I might hire somebody and then I go, "Oh, I'm sorry, I can't continue employing you." So, that's the reason I'm gonna pay the salary, which is the majority of this money needed. And that's why I've asked the commission, just to cover the benefits section, to make sure I have enough money.
Our Commissioner Gibson has called for questions, so we need to go ahead and vote, please.
Eleven yes, two no, one abstain.
All right, resolution passes. Thank you all. Commend, let's go to Resolution 2024-0404. Mr. Palmer.
To the Honorable Chairman Mark DeWitt, members of the county of Hawkins County Board of Commissioners and Members of the Senate, and at the twenty-second day of April, 2024, resolution reference approval surplus two solid waste roll-off truck trucks and in fact, an agreement with Jim Wood Auction Company to auction sent trucks approaching you for the two new roll-off trucks. Whereas the solid waste committee recommends the auction company to purchase two solid waste roll-off truck trucks to be declared surplus property. Description and quantity are as follows. Quantity one, make or make, or two thousand point two, max, two, been under as follows. And we'll adapt the same on the second. Whereas the solid waste committee also voted to recommend the full commission of the surplus truck to be sold to auction to be deducted by Jim Wood Auction Company Incorporated in Montgomery, Alabama, which guaranteed the dollar or less a commission fee of seven percent absolute of the gross sale. And now, therefore, be it resolved, will lift the truck to be declared surplus, taken to the four-manching auction county to sell with proceeds deposited in the solid waste fund number 116 for the purpose of purchasing two new roll-off truck trucks with any remaining funds reserved for each truck purchase. Mr. Chairman, I surrender.
Okay, good. Motion for Commissioner Palmer, Second Commissioner Palmer. Any questions or discussion? Yes, sir?
So, I understand that we have surplus of two trucks, right? And we're getting ready to auction them off and we're to purchase two more trucks. And I was wondering, with the point, if they were already surplus, why were we looking to buy it? Are these different vehicles for different tasks and purposes? If we're selling two surplus trucks in order to buy, and they're only two years old? I guess my actual question here, sir, is if they're only two years old, then have they already depreciated in value in some way or something? And if we are selling them to purchase two more trucks, if we have two surplus trucks, why are we using the money we sold them for to buy two more trucks?
So, this program has been going on for several years now. What we do, we take our two trucks, we auction them off, use proceeds to buy two brand-new trucks. Those proceeds, the reason we do the two, two years, is that way, if not depreciate to the point where we can't get money out of it. We're getting a really good deal on this, and this has been something that's continued to work, and we just continue to, you know, take and keep taking advantage of it as long as it's available.
We actually have received more money at times for those trucks from the auction than we paid for the truck. So, it's one of those programs that sounds too good to be true. I was around for the first round of it, and I said, "That's never gonna work." But it's worked every, every time we've done it since then.
And I saw one of the workers that rides a truck, and he said that every year, they can expect, you know, a good truck coming back to them, and they're happy with it, and they know what we need to do as a county.
Yeah. Well, that sounds like a good deal.
See, we buy them at government rates and sell them at commercial rates.
Nice. It's like Mark said, "Sounds too good to be true," but in these cases, it's actually...
Yeah, well, that's awesome. That's cool. Thank you for the clarification. I did have one follow-up very quickly. I did read in the, in the resolution that we were using Alabama Auction Company to get a seven percent rate from it. I just wondered why we didn't source something more local?
That's the program that...
That's the program that's been set up. I don't know that there's anybody close that would do that.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Hearing done, let's go ahead and vote, please.
Fourteen yes.
All right. Motion carries. 2024-0405, introduced by Commissioner Roach.
General Mark DeWitt, Chairman and Members of Hawkins County Board of Commissioners and Regular Session at the twenty-second day of April, 2024. Approval of lease house, Sarah Tesco, Deskaunta, five oh five three C on local function copy at the Hawkins County Mayor's Office for thirty-six months. Whereas Hawkins County Mayor's Office lease a copy of more than nine years becoming obsolete and inefficient for the office's needs. Whereas the new lease is for a thirty-six-month period from Azor Inc., parent company of Rockville Office Supply. Reuniting the greater and faster capabilities encompassing copying, printing, and scanning with toner and service included in charge. Whereas the monthly charge shall not increase from the amount we are paying for the current copy of the mayor's office, or remain one hundred and sixty dollars per month. Therefore, be it resolved, the county mayor, Mark DeWitt, is authorized to sign the lease agreement for said copy to Mr. Chairman, I surrender.
All right. We've got a motion from Commissioner Roach, Second Commissioner Palmer. Any questions on that? Hearing done, let's go ahead and vote, please.
Fourteen yes.
All right. Thank you. Resolution passes. 2024-0406, introduced by Commissioner Roach.
General Mark DeWitt, Chairman and Member of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners and Regular Session at the twenty-second day of April, 2024. Resolution reference approval to apply for a litter grant for the fiscal year 2024-2025 from the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation and approval of tax program description. Whereas Hawkins County, and whereas Hawkins County intends to apply for a litter grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the fiscal year 2024-2025, and a contract for the grant will impose certain legal obligations upon the county. And therefore, be it resolved, the county mayor, Mark DeWitt, is authorized to apply on behalf of Hawkins County for a litter and trash collecting grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation. Therefore, be it resolved, the county mayor, Mark DeWitt, is authorized to execute contracts or other necessary documents which may be required to signify acceptance of the litter and trash collection grant by Hawkins County. Mr. Chairman, I surrender.
All right. Motion for Commissioner Roach, Second Commissioner Palmer. Any questions? Commissioner Barrett?
Is there any matching funds required for the grant?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The trash collecting grant sounds great. What does that entail? Would we get the grant, and then that money is spent, how, for the what type of...
A lot of it is spent on promotional-type items, et cetera, to encourage trash collection. It's a grant that we have been involved with for many years, and this renews. Any other questions? Hearing done, let's go ahead and vote.
Fourteen yes.
All right. That resolution passes. 2024-0407, introduced again by Commissioner Roach.
General Mark DeWitt, Chairman and Member of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners and Regular Session at the twenty-second day of April, 2024. Approval of the grant application in accordance with funds in the amount of seventy thousand dollars from the U.S. Department of Transportation with self-funded local match of thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars for Hawkins County Airport. Whereas the U.S. Department of Transportation has offered Hawkins County a grant to conduct a drainage easement review for a land acquisition study. And whereas the airport has a building restriction line violation in reference to off-site, non-site drainage. And whereas the evaluation will evaluate drainage patterns, assess options with the potential of property acquisition, including appraisal services, and provide recommendations for future considerations of stormwater management. And therefore, be it resolved, approval be given to apply and accept said grant for Hawkins County Airport with authorization given to county mayors, assign any and all necessary documents for said grant. Mr. Chairman, I surrender.
Motion by Commissioner Roach, Second Commissioner Gibson. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Who is the engineering company that's gonna be doing this? And was there a bid made public for it, going to be made public? And how is it advertised? How will it be advertised?
Mark Baker International is usually the engineering companies, if I'm correct. And they have done all of our work at the airport. They're familiar with all of what goes on up there. As far as advertising it for bid, we can probably do that.
I mean, to save taxpayer money? I mean, because we're spending three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars toward that seventy thousand dollar grant to match that? Also, was this problem with the flooding or the assessment for flooding, was it due to the tarback being re-put paid?
No. It's, that's been a problem that's been there for a long time.
Is this reverting back to Mr. Skeleton's problem? That was back when it happened, or is it a different section of...
It's the Templeton property, I believe. Yeah. Yeah.
And there was a, is this trying to determine whether the flooding is so significant that we need to purchase additional land?
Yes.
And for Hobby?
I disagree with your statement, Hobby Airport, but...
Hobby Airport.
For the airport, yes.
And yes, if we did find that additional lands needed to be purchased because of drainage issues, where would that fund come from?
We'd have to work on that. We have to get the results of the study first. I'm not sure how that's gonna come out, so we'll take it one step at a time. Commissioner Roach, you're on the board.
So, I mean, we could move to amend to include that the, that a bid process be issued for a company to do the engineering study. I just don't, I'm just like, "All right, I have that on the revision."
Fourteen yes.
I think we're getting ready to give an amendment.
Yeah. I, it is gonna be for amendment. Let me figure out where it's gonna go. Okay. So, I move to amend by adding, after conduct a drainage easement grid review, comma, space...
What paragraph were you reading?
Oh, we're in the very first line, the very first paragraph.
Okay.
By an engineering company that has been bid by the county mayor's office, comma, through a land acquisition study. So, I move to amend to add, to conduct a drainage easement review, comma, space, by an engineering group that will be identified through a bid by the county mayor's office, comma, through a land acquisition study. That's my amendment.
Okay. Everybody understand the amendment?
We have an additional question.
When we get this on the board to discuss for a little bit?
All right. After easement review, comma, we're gonna add, by an engineering company that has been bid by the county mayor's office through a land acquisition study.
Identified through a bid. Or identified through the bid process. I don't know how to...
That has been identified through the bid process.
There you go.
Hey, does everybody understand the amendments?
Let me read it again. I wanna make sure I got it correctly. We're gonna add, by an engineering company that has been identified through the bid process by the county mayor's office through a land acquisition study. Right? Thank you.
All right. We're voting on the amendment itself. We've got a motion by Commissioner Roach, Second from Commissioner Palmer. This is voting on the amendment itself. Any further discussion or questions?
On the amendment.
On the amendment. Okay. Let's go ahead and vote.
Fourteen yes.
Now, we're back to the resolution as amended.
Yes. So, is it possible that there's a family relation with the Templeton property? And any commissioners, will there be a conflict of interest there?
No. There's no conflict. None that I know of, none that's come up in the past, anyway. Okay. Set us up to vote on that. Okay, this is, this is as amended. Motion by Commissioner Roach, Second by Commissioner Gibson, as amended.
Twelve yes, two no.
All right. That motion carries. Resolution 2024-0408. Commissioner Parker.
General Mark DeWitt, Members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners and Members of the Session at the twenty-second day of April, 2024. Approval to accept the Tennessee Economic and Community Development Grant in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars to refurbish the exterior and first-floor interior of the Clay Care House in Rogersville. The grant requires a matching amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-one thousand, which will be equally shared by Hawkins County and the city of Rogersville at sixty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. Total project cost will be four hundred and twenty-eight, five seventy-one, forty-three cents. Whereas the Tennessee Economic and Community Development Office has made available grants to the renovation of historic buildings referred to as the Store of Development Grant Program. And whereas the Hawkins County applied to for a three hundred thousand dollar historic development grant in the purpose of renovating the exterior and first-floor of the Clay Care House in Rogersville, has been awarded the grant with a local match being required totaling one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-three cents. Whereas the match funds will be shared equally in Hawkins County and the town of Rogersville, each being responsible for sixty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. Whereas the total project cost will be four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-three cents. And whereas the contract dealing detailing all the specifics of the grant award is attached to this resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that approval... Now therefore, be it resolved, that approval be given to accept the aforementioned grant from the Tennessee Economic and Community Development Office and through the Hawkins County share matching funds to renovate and repair the Clay Caner House. And therefore, be it further resolved, the county mayor Mark DeWitt is authorized to sign any and all necessary documents for said grant. Mr. Chairman, I summon him.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Barker, second, Commissioner Clons. I'm sure there are questions. Yes, sir.
Uh, I think we can all appreciate reserving historic sites in Rogersville. It's really awesome talking about our community. There's no argument there. I think that's pretty cool. I, I did wanna ask, um, at this, this, this location, is this open to the public? Is there a return on the investment to the public taxpayers? Is this like a museum of some sorts that people can walk through or?
Part of, part of the application process was identifying a business that would go in there. Right now, we've got a homesteader group that wants to do like canning lessons. We're gonna put, we're gonna refurbish the commercial kitchen. They can do, you know, canning classes and so forth, plus have whatever they've been making on sale there. Uh, if, if for some reason that falls through, we've got a couple of backups that wanna go in there, including a restaurant and some other things. So, yes, it will be a business that serves the public, but it also will be beautification of the Clay Caner House to increase tourism and such. And there'll be some room in there. This is first floor only. We're gonna get this out of the way, then go to the second floor. And, uh, it, it's, if, if you ever wanna go through there, we'll make arrangements for you to go through there. It, it's a beautiful building, not right now.
Yeah.
Because it, it's kind of in disarray on the inside, but it, it can be, you know, the, the jewel of Rogersville, basically, of Hawkins County.
I, I certainly agree that keeping an old building is really awesome and I think the main question, there was a lot of questions coming in from that, is if we're, you know, one hundred and twenty-eight K is a decent bit of money that could be used for things. And of course, you know, obviously that comes into question. So, a lot of people just want to make sure that this restoration wasn't simply just a restoration and order.
It's not gonna just sit there and we have to understand that that building is owned jointly with the city of Rogersville, so they're gonna provide half of the match.
And we have to maintain it anyway. We're already still maintaining it right now.
Yeah.
And it's sitting there and has our purpose. If we can, uh, have a purpose for it and put it back on the tax rolls, and that's what we're trying to do. And the group that is looking at this, uh, went through the USDA, the US, I lost my, I lost my mission. Um, the, um, small business, Tennessee Small Business Office, and, um, have put a really good plan together. And I think, uh, they've been renting out spaces, there's, you know, um, have different, it'll be similar to, um, the Rose Center in Marston. And so it will benefit the community as a whole. And so I, I mean, I think we've got a win-win. If we can remodel the building and preserve it for the amount that we're having to pay and, you know, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
The grant, the grant specifications, make sure that we put something in it. It's not just gonna be remodeled and sit there.
It has to produce an income and it has to have, um, importance.
Yes, ma'am.
You stated that it would be the first floor right now.
Yes.
The business scale would go in with just the first floor done or would decide it and go to the second floor?
Absolutely, absolutely. There's room for them and the commercial kitchen will be on the first floor. There's some ADA stuff we have to do to the building. There's some porch renovation that we have to do. Uh, I, you know, it, it's gonna solve a lot of issues that are around, surrounding that building right now. Uh, it's become a place for homeless to hang out and I can swear to that personally. I mean, if you go out the corner of the backyard of that building, you go into the corner of my backyard. So I, I see it every day and there, there are people sleeping under the trees that separate our property from, from the property behind us. It, it's, it needs to have something in it to keep, keep things going.
Is there any basement or tunnels or anything on it that is not stable or anything like that?
That's an urban legend.
Urban legend.
Yeah. It, it's a legend that there's a tunnel that goes underneath Rogersville and part of the, underground railroad and all that, that it's not.
Crossway.
It's a crossway.
Crossway.
Yeah, and, and it's blocked off.
But there's no tunnels or no, nothing going to the depot or, you know. It's a great story, but a lot of people like to nail it.
Yeah, we may promote that. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yes, we were wondering, um, for our match amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, um, has anyone looked into, um, sorry, yeah, it's the happen now, yes.
Yeah.
Um, any possible like private funding avenues, like from historical societies or anything like that that could possibly take the load off?
Well, we got a three hundred thousand dollar grant from the, um, historian. I don't think they're gonna match it for us here. So, you know, we gotta put some skin in the game.
Yeah, that, that's how you get the grants is we put them, as Commissioner Barker said, some skin in the game. Mr. Clons, you're next.
Oh, I thought we already supported the commercial kitchen over on sixty-six.
We did. We did. That's.
Probably within another.
Porkwell?
I mean, I'm putting something in it.
Okay.
Are we gonna support it?
That's the UT Extension Office and that's a different group of people that will be, that do a different group of things.
Okay, hearing nothing else, Pope Commissioner Palmer at the last second.
So, speaking on that commercial kitchen, so UT Extension and 4H, they will be using it for a lot of educational purposes through their programs, um, working with the schools for the, or culinary, um, that's not so much for the public. No, they're hoping to utilize it for the public, but a lot of that's gonna be through their programs and competition, um, and then branch out. So, we've got two different, two different ideas here. We've got one that's gonna be a business and another that's gonna be a service, so.
And they're gonna, they're gonna be assisted, uh, the farmers markets.
And, and, you know, to increase our, our reach of, of businesses that could go in there, that would certainly attract, you know, a restaurant if we have business or a kitchen in there. Um, that, you know, I'm dreaming, but that's my, that's my ideal thing is to have a restaurant. Okay, hearing nothing else, let's go ahead and vote, please.
Fourteen yes.
All right, thank you all. Commission, let's go, number twenty twenty four oh four oh nine by Commissioner Roach.
Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in Regular Session at this twenty-second day of April twenty twenty-four. Resolution reference for new and adoption of restated debt management policy to Hawkins County in decision. Whereas Hawkins County, uh, whereas Hawkins County adopted a debt management policy on November the eleventh, two thousand eleven, promoting and improving financial decisions to meet specific grant mandates. And whereas the policy was amended by the commission on April the twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, and no further changes. Therefore, be it resolved, Hawkins County Commission acknowledges the required annual review for grant mandates and adopts the restatement policy attached in exhibit A to further fit the goals and objectives of the original debt management policy. Mr. Chairman, I summon him.
Motion by Commissioner Roach, second, Commissioner Britton, any questions?
Miss, um, if it's okay, it's just a typo, but it should be adopted at debt.
At debt, yeah. It says debt, let's take it.
Mr. Chairman, do you need to amend all that?
No, we just corrected it, let's go. Any questions?
Commissioner Roach, can you re-clarify those who were not independent, but hearing when the county debt will be paid off and how much we actually owe?
Yeah, so, uh, according to the state of Tennessee Comptroller's Office, uh, we owe, and I'm not gonna pull up the exact figure, but it's somewhere around sixty million dollars. If we do not issue any bonds or acquire any new debt, we're scheduled to pay our debt off in about twenty thirty-eight as it stands right now. We're actually getting ready to pay some debt off in the highway debt service. Um, but we also need to keep in mind that we have some major projects that are before us to do. So the chance of us being absolutely debt-free by twenty thirty-eight realistically is just not, it's just not realistic. We have some major projects coming, but we, we are doing pretty good. Actually, uh, we have received a rating from the Comptroller's Office of, of rating of no concerns, no listed concerns.
Yeah, I just wanna say that, uh, that Commissioner Roach did a great job in our budget here and if you get the opportunity to be there, it is on, uh, the right before we could use Paige, put together a presentation that walked through the financials of the county. She wrote down a lot of it, including some of the debt and some of this stuff she wrote down. I meant to mention that earlier, uh, when we were talking about budgets and whatnot, but he did a good job breaking that down. And it was during one of the budget years, you can go back on Facebook and find it on Bubba's page, but, um, anyway, that comptroller report that he referenced is in there. Um, very helpful information.
Do you have to share it again, tell them about the year?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, let's go ahead and vote, please.
Fourteen yes.
All right, thank you, that motion carries. I need to back up and, and read something else into the minutes that was just brought to my attention. The, uh, audit committee report dated March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four, uh, was presented to the audit committee and, and passed. Uh, that needs to be read into the minutes, please. And moving on, we're gonna go to twenty twenty four oh four ten, introduced by Commissioner Roach.
Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in Regular Session at this twenty-second day of April twenty twenty-four. Approval to renew the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System employer rate seven percent for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Whereas the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, uh, minimum employer contribution rate remains unchanged at six point zero two percent for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And whereas Hawkins County has previously set the rate at seven percent, therefore be it resolved, the approval be given to reinstate the aforementioned rate to seven percent for Hawkins County's employer contribution rate to the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Chairman, I summon him.
All right, motion Commissioner Roach, second, Commissioner Thacker, any questions on this one? Yes, ma'am.
Why does Hawkins County have the set rate set at seven percent rather than the statement on that six point zero two percent?
Mr. G. Cannon, do you care?
TCRS sets the employer rate, employee rate's always five percent. Employer rate fluctuates based on background studies. Back several years ago, already was eight point six eight percent. When that rate declined to five point six eight percent, it was an opportunity to overpay the rate to drive down the rate for any future increase to help stabilization of the TCRS employer rate. That's what we've done successfully in years past and the rate has fluctuated for counties. Ours has fluctuated minimally due to our overpaying.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The short answer is.
The guy's on the machine.
Come to the, come to the buzzer here.
Yeah.
The short answer is it just allows us to stay, it allows us to insulate some of those major movements, those swings.
I understood.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I don't need to talk that, because I, he gets over my head sometimes.
No, I understood his answer.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Fourteen yes.
All right, that resolution passes. Twenty twenty four oh four eleven, introduced by Commissioner Gill.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in Regular Session at this twenty-second day of April twenty twenty-four. Resolution reference bridge located on Canyon Valley Loop denaming the veteran Charles M. Thacker Bridge. Whereas Charles M. Thacker was raised, lives in the Canyon Valley community and whereas Charles M. Thacker served in the army for twelve years with the eight hundred and forty-fourth Engineering Group. Whereas Charles M. Thacker served during, uh, the Desert Storm War. And whereas Hawkins County seeks opportunities to honor veterans within our community, therefore be it resolved, that the bridge located on Canyon Valley Loop that is a quarter mile on Canyon Valley Loop, after turning onto the road from Stanley Valley Road, uh, be named the veteran Charles M. Thacker Bridge, which will be identified by assigned place there by the highway department. Mr. Chairman, I summon him.
A motion from Commissioner Gill, second, Commissioner Alvis. Any questions, discussion on this one? Hearing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Thirteen yes, one is down.
All right, thank you, that resolution carries. Twenty twenty four oh four twelve, Commissioner Roach.
Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in Regular Session at this twenty-second day of April twenty twenty-four. Resolution reference budget and management journal, Mr. Chairman, I summon him.
Motion from Commissioner Roach, second, Commissioner Gibson. Any questions on this one? Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yes, our question was, is the insurance money guaranteed or already received or is there like a wait time on that?
The insurance money is already not received.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, let's go ahead and vote, please.
Fourteen yes.
Resolution passes. Onto twenty twenty four oh four thirteen, again, Commissioner Roach.
Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in Regular Session at this twenty-second day of April twenty twenty-four. Resolution reference budget and highway, Mr. Chairman, I summon him.
Motion, Commissioner Roach, second, Commissioner Gibson, any questions? Yes.
Uh, yeah, um, so as we were looking at those extra documents in the budget, um, it looked like eight thousand and three thousand were being decreased entirely, um, where it's like there was an eight thousand figure and then they removed an eight thousand figure to kind of slide the funds around for the laundry services. Um, if, if we're able to just kind of remove a figure like that in its entirety, were those figures earmarked for something previously or are, is it just like a floating number that we're able to just kind of move digits?
It's, it's charges that were anticipated but are not gonna be realized. So in order to not take that fund out of balance, we just have to move it around.
Okay, um, and then we, we just had a general question about the laundry services. That's pretty new to us. Um, so is it, is that normal to, for our county to spend thirty-six thousand, five hundred on laundry services?
That, that's a bone of contention with everybody. Uh, that figure comes from a contract that was signed by the previous, uh, road commissioner, road superintendent and we're kind of stuck with it. We've tried to break it a couple of times and it just, it's just not working, but you can rest assured that that will change at the end of that, uh, at the end of that contract. Yes, ma'am.
How much longer is the contract?
I'm sorry?
How much longer is the contract?
It was a five-year contract signed in his last year, so we've got like three more
That seems weird. What, um, was there a reason that the county has to pay for laundry services instead of folks doing their own laundry?
It's just a decision made a long time ago. I can't speak to why it was made.
What I said, this, this portion of the budget is pretty much control of the road superintendent. I mean, we have to give our final approval. We're having good money within his budget, but it's kind of up to him to say why not.
Mr. Gill.
What was that individual's name?
So, uh.
Who?
There was a previous road superintendent. One we have now is Danny Jones, but, you know, he's just, he's still held to that contract unless he breaks it, which is a early termination pick.
Which is basically the remainder of the contract. Mr. Gill.
Uh, yeah, I asked that question to, uh, uh, someone after we had discussed this in budget and, uh, I'm just calling it just where we provide the uniform, you know, they would, uh, launder the uniforms for them. You know, you had so many, the workers had so many, then you turned those in, they washed them and you, but anyway, had to do with us supplying the uniform is the reason that we were washing the uniforms.
Yeah, it, it's basically a uniform rental, uh.
Centos.
Centos, uh, who, you know, gives you the uniform and then comes and picks it up, drops off new ones, et cetera. Yes, sir, Rick Campbell.
Um, why can't he take that out of his general fund? They've won sign for it.
He didn't sign for it.
Well, it come out of that. It's one, it's signed for, it should come out of that.
It's all within the highway fund. I mean, it's all the same thing. Uh, like I said, it's, it's something we're not real pleased with, but if we break it, we're gonna have to pay the whole thing anyway and it's ironclad. We've tried a couple of different times.
I would assume the type of work that the day they get tired, all of the uniforms, I worked in a print shop, in about three months, you look, you black somebody painted you with the spray gun and, and you were ready for another set of work clothes.
Right.
We bought ours ourselves.
Yeah.
So that's the reason.
I just wanna say that my husband works in the county garage department, where they did the same thing with his uniforms.
Yeah, it's a uniform service from Centos.
Yeah.
Yes. Any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote, please. Let's go ahead and vote, please.
Thirteen yes, one of them stand.
All right, motion carries. Uh, we're gonna move on to the notaries, Commissioner Gibson. Okay, we've got a motion from Commissioner Gibson, second, Commissioner Britton to accept the list of notaries, is there any questions or comments? Now, don't get ready to run off because we've got an out-of-order resolution coming up. Go ahead and vote, please.
Fourteen yes.
All right, that, that resolution carries. Need a motion to suspend the rules, please. We've got a motion from Commissioner Barker, second, Commissioner Palmer was the first one.
That was five for I guess.
Okay, okay, let's, let's use the motion from Commissioner Palmer, second, Commissioner Britton. Suspend the rules to get out-of-order resolution. All right, so out-of-order resolution twenty twenty four oh four oh one, out-of-order, uh, introduced by Commissioner Palmer. Oh, this is been, I would be confused on this, let's go ahead and vote to suspend the rule. You know, okay, we.
Fourteen yes.
All right, we've, uh, we're gonna suspend the rules for out-of-order resolution twenty twenty four oh four oh one. Commissioner Palmer, you have the copy now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
To the Honorable Mark DeWitt, Chairman and member of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners and Regular Session met the twenty-second day of April twenty twenty-four, resolution reference approval to surplus three Hawkins County Convenience Center buildings. Whereas the Hawkins County Solidway Department has three small removable, removable buildings located at three county convenience centers that are being replaced with building purchases safe grant funds. And whereas the script for those buildings are as follows. One, eight by eleven structure at the Parkland Valley Convenience Center. Two, eight, number two, eight by twenty structure at the Bureau of Water and Beverage Center. Number three, eight by, an eight by eight structure at the Clintz Convenience Center. Now therefore be it resolved that approval to be given to declared under list of convenience center buildings surplus properties and Hawkins County Solidway Department begin to dispose of the island either by sale to the highest bidder or if there is no interest in the sale by destruction through recycling. Mr. Chairman, I summon him.
Okay, we've got a motion, Commissioner Palmer, second, Commissioner Gibson, any questions or comments? Commissioner Barrett.
Is there any particular reason why the eight by twenty is so much larger than the other two? I'm just kind of curious.
Uh, in my mind, Commissioner Barrett, those, those buildings were made out of scrap lumber, uh, duct tape and vayden wire. And that's just what they had available. Uh, you know, to be honest, they're, they're not, uh, they're not a real sturdy structure, but in order to give the public fair shot at getting them out of there, we're gonna bid them out and, uh, and get, go to the highest bidder on the three of them. It, it's really gonna be, it's, there's gonna be some restrictions put in there because what has to happen is they have to prepare for the move, they have to come and get that building on a Saturday so that new one can be replaced on a Sunday, and then Monday the wiring and everything else will put in it. So that's gonna be part of, of the restrictions, but anybody that wants to bid on them is welcome to, and we will advertise that. Okay, any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote, please.
Fourteen yes.
All right, that resolution carries now. Hang on just one second before we adjourn. Uh, because we've got people on the clock that are, uh, that are trying to clear this building out, et cetera, uh, we've been asked to, to ask you if you'd have conversations, et cetera, to move them outside so we can close the building up on a, on a timely basis. I appreciate that. Commissioner Trent, any other questions?
Yes, I do, the, uh, the bridge that was named after Charles Stagg, is that man here tonight?
No. Okay, motion to adjourn by Commissioner Barker, second, Commissioner Britton, all in favor, go ahead and vote.